City of Romulus, regular city council meeting for Monday, August 6, 2018. We will take roll call vote at this time. Councilwoman Abdo.
Here.
Councilman Barden.
He's excused.
Thank you. Councilwoman Roscoe.
Here.
Councilwoman Tally.
Yes, here.
Councilman Wadsworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Webb. Excused. And Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Who have a quorum this evening. Number one is agenda. Number two is minutes. Three, petitioner. Four, chairperson's report. Five, mayor's report. Six A is the clerk's report. Six B, treasurer's report. Seven, public comment. Eight, unfinished business. Nine, new business. Ten, communication. And eleven is adjournment. And res- approval of the agenda is required.
So move to approve the agenda.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Abdo, to approve the minutes from the regular council meeting held July 23rd. Ms. Roscoe?
No, it's approval of agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. The agenda, correction. The agenda for this evening for August, Monday, August 6, 2018. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
And approve yes. Motion approved.
Two A is approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting held July 23rd, 2018.
So move for July 23rd, 2018.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wadsworth and supported by Ms. Roscoe to approve of the minutes from the regular council meeting held July 23rd, now July 23rd meeting. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Obstain.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Yes, I approve. Motion carried.
Two B is approval of the minutes from the public hearing held on Monday, July 23rd, 2018. And that was demolition list 18 dash 01.
So move for the Monday, the 23rd, for the minutes from the demolition list, 18 dash 01.
Support.
Spin motion by Mr. Wadsworth, approved, I mean, motion by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe, to approve the minutes from the public hearing held on Monday, July 23rd, demolition list. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Obstain.
I approve. Motion carried.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried.
We do not have any petitioners this evening, so we will go on to the chairperson's
Thank you, Barb, and I want to thank you. And we've got quite a few items up in the chairperson's report. We want to start off with bringing David Jones up from St. John's Lodge. Can you come up, please?
Good evening, everyone. I'm David Jones from St. John's Lodge, number 44. I'm here for our upcoming Youth Day, August the 25th. You know, it's St. John's Lodge, number 44, Free and Accepted Masons, Prince Hall Affiliated, where Curtis Hall is our present worshipful master. I'm here to invite the city, as we do every year, to help and support, because this is a community project where we give the school supplies away to the youth in the neighborhood. We're here to invite everyone, because we will have, we will always, the usual, the hot dogs, the chip program, backpacks, and we asking the support from the city and everyone, because we just, this could be a great, another great event. We, we, yes, we are trying to give away over 300-plus backpacks this year. Like I always say, I want this to become the biggest school, back-to-school giveaway in the county. And we know Romulus is the best-kept secret in the county. So we asking for your support, as usual, the fire department, the police department. We have held our usual stuff out there, the, you know, the, food you can eat. Parents, please bring your children. We, like I said, we wanted to grow, continue to grow stronger, and make this a great community event again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
And, oh, and we are accepting all donations, because this here is, it is, it does cost to do this. So you can contact me or list. It will be a flyer on the cable channel.
Thank you. Next, we want to extend the floor to Pastor Bob Harper.
Hello, everyone. Pastor Bob Harper, Ball Road Tabernacle, 7009 Ball Road, Romulus, Michigan. I would like to ask the council if you would grant us a free, no-fee yard permit, so that we can have our yard sale this coming Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
I'll make that motion.
I'm done. It's good to see you smile, Bill.
If there's no more, I'll move that we issuing no-fee permit for the Ball Road Tabernacle on Thursday, which is, the date is, someone help me, August the?
9th, 10th, and 11th.
9th, 10th, and 11th.
Support.
Okay. Spin motion by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Abdo, for a no-fee, fee permit for Ball Road Church for the 9th, 10th, and 11th. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Wadsworth?
Hope to see you there.
Hmm?
Hope to see you there.
Okay.
If you have anything you want to donate to the art sale, we'd be glad to take it.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
And mayor, whether you like it or not, I love you.
Thank you. We have a few memorial resolution. I want to turn the floor over to Councilwoman Celeste Roscoe.
Thank you. First one I have is a memorial resolution for Henry James Freitag. He was born on September 23rd, 1949, and he passed away on July 24th, 2018. Do I get support?
Support.
Spin motion by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Mr. Wadsworth, for resolution for Henry, is it Freit- Freitag?
Freitag.
Freitag. Any discussion?
I do, Madam Chairman, if I could, just, this is Kathy Freitag's brother-in-law.
Okay.
Longtime Romulus resident, and, you know, when I went to the visitation, you know, you learn a lot of things about people, and one thing that I admire and heard that he, he really helped raise his grandchildren, and he was just a person that would give the shirt off his back for anybody, without question. So I know the family's hurting, it was, was not expected, but just ask you keep Kathy and Dave and their family in prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Any other comments or discussion? If not, roll call vote. Councilwoman Roscoe?
Yes.
Councilman Wadsworth?
Yes.
Councilman, Councilwoman Webb?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Okay, thank you. And the next one I have is a resolution to recognize Reverend Dr. John J. Coles, Senior, on celebrating his 19th pastoral anniversary this year at the Union Grove Baptist Church in Romulus.
I'll support that.
Thank you. It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Webb, for, for the resolution for Reverend John Coles, Senior, for his 19th pastoral anniversary from Union Grove. Any discussion? No discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
The last one I have is a resolution to recognize our Medal of Honor recipient, Charles Kawaska. He served in the United States Army in the 1890s and the early 1900s, and is awarded for his actions during the Philippine insurrection.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Abdo, for the resolution for the Medal of Honor for, is it Colonel? Is it Colonel?
Corporal.
Corporal Kawaska, for the Medal of Honor. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion approved. I want to lend the floor right now to Councilman Wadsworth.
Please.
Thank you, Mrs. Tally. I'd like a memorial resolution for Randy Prater. If someone will support on it, I'll expand on it. Randy Prater was my next-door neighbor on Barth Road since 1983, and we were friends, good friends, and suddenly, on the 1st of August, the Lord reached out and took him from us. Randy was married to his wife, Joanne. They had, they had three kids, Stacy, Stacy Jenny, and Randy Junior. Everybody knows his wife, she worked in the school system for many years, and about a year ago, they retired, and they moved up to Holton Lake, and the kids took over next door. But he was a friend of mine for years and years. We watched him and Joanne move there on Barth Road with the three small children, and we watched them all get raised. We, we shared many events in our life, weddings, funerals, birthdays, and so on. And he was just a good person. He wasn't a politician. He just went to work every day and took care of his family, and he's going to be missed by my wife and I, Jean, definitely, on Barth Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wadsworth. It's been motioned by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for a memorial resolution for Randy Prater. Any more discussion? Hearing now, we'll go with roll call vote. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Wad- Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved. Next, on the chairperson's report, a couple of things I just want to, just kind of put out there. We had an incident in my hood on Wick Road on Friday, and I just want to give a couple of shout-outs to our police department and their handling of the situation on Wick Road. I know my neighbor, Barb Fitzgerald, can relate. We both live over on Wick Road where the incident occurred, and when I say that I was so impressed with the handling of the situation by our police department, not only was I impressed with their, how the action they took on the situation, but the relationship that they have staffed. One of the things that was very impressive for me is that the things we vote on here at city council, we did a mutual aid agreement for the Western Wayne Consortium that we approved a couple of months ago, and through that mutual aid agreement, we had all the support that came out for this incident to help us get the incident under control. So I want to do a shout-out for the relationship building, the consortium that came out that assists Michigan, the state police, the airport, just a consortium of people out there helping to get the situation under control, and it was just very impressive. And I just want to give a shout-out to our chief of police, Chief Settles. Relationships, he had people calling him wanting to come out and help the city of Romulus, if was there anything needed, but the situation got, was under control, so there was no additional help needed to, but it was just very encouraging to see people coming together, uniting for something, you know, even for something like that, you know, and that mutual aid agreement that we voted on as a council came into action, when people just came out and supported, within an hour, I was told, within an hour that we had the help and support we needed to get that situation under control. So thank you, our Romulus Police Department, and the relationship building, as a result, with the mutual aid agreements and disagreements, I mean, on the relationship that our chief has with different relationships he established over the years, with his experience and history and in the law enforcement. So I just want to say thank you for that.
And, Madam Chair, if I may say, I'd like to piggyback on that. I did receive calls, of course, all, all of the council members will receive calls, but I have to say, it's not the council members' place to interfere while there is an active investigation going on, because our charter does state, as a legislative body, we as a council shall see that provisions are made for public health, welfare, and safety of persons and property. And like Madam Chair just said, we voted on mutual aid here, we have given the police what they need to protect the citizens and the property of this city. We are here for the provisions, to make sure that the police officers can do what they are supposed to do as our safety directors.
Thank you. Any other comments? Moving on, and this is a good segue, that one of our councilperson had a very significant birthday this weekend, is that correct? Happy birthday, Councilwoman Eva Webb?
As long as you don't mention my age.
I didn't say your age.
Happy birthday, Eva.
Thank you.
We want to give her a shout-out. And I have to say this too, because on her birthday, she was out there supporting our big event this weekend, Relay for Life, so what a way for council portion to show support on her birthday, by being out there for Relay for Life, a 24-hour event in our city of Romulus. So thank you so much, Councilwoman Webb.
You're quite welcome. And also, there's another councilwoman here who also shared the same day, her birthday was Councilwoman Virginia Williams.
Okay, then, no. Happy birthday.
And we won't ask you how old you are.
Amen. So thanks, two significant birthdays, amen. All right now. So now, going into that, we did have an awesome event with the Relay for Life, the 24-hour event this past weekend, strong support from our city and just people all in our community. It was a very well-attended event, so want to give a shout-out for Shona Sylvie Baum, for the hard work and all the support she received in making that a fantastic, again, and then a shout-out for Romulus for hitting the go, well, didn't hit the goal we were looking, but still high numbers we did from last year, which is just pretty significant. So shout-out to our community.
Madam Chairman, could I piggyback on that one too?
Sure, please.
I know we didn't prepare to do a complete report on it, but you brought up the relay, and, you know, very proud, this is the second annual, and so as a group, the mission is to raise money for cancer society, which we almost hit the goal, came close to the 50,000. I think they still have some kind of date in September, but I'm really also proud of our team Romulus, that did a great job. So many people, but I know Tracy was our captain, and Jen, and Lynn, and, I mean, I was proud of the setup that we had, the display, you know, the teamwork, you know, people coming together on their time off, staying all night. We had people on the track, I was told, all the time.
Yep.
And, you know, so we raised a record number of dollars. It was close to, what, 15,000? I'll get the exact numbers for it, I wasn't prepared to get into it, but, you know, that's good stuff. When we can do things like that, and every day, we're living, hearing about people with cancer, it doesn't just, not just for a cure, but for a cure, for treatment, for transportation of people battling, to survivors, I mean, everybody's been touched by it. It was just a very proud moment, and I'm sure in the future, we'll get Shona out here and talk about it and share some of the data, but I just wanted to say thanks to everybody who was involved in that.
Thank you, mayor. And just talking about all the good things happening in our city, I just want to do a couple of quick shout-outs to the APA, who sponsors our, the annual, well, let me put it, the annual community festival, but what I like of what they have done in recent years, they've dubbed it the Romulus Community Festival, and I just want to thank them for that, because what it does is just bring unity in the community, and we just, that's our goal, is to just bring people together. So thank you for the APA, for their annual sponsoring of the Romulus Community Festival, bringing all together in unity for a great time. I want to give a shout-out to our city for their participation and help in that, and then from my understanding, Councilwoman Williams' contributions to the event for that past weekend, so thanks for everybody coming together to make a successful event for our APA, the Romulus Community Festival. Thank you. And then I want to do a quick shout-out to Rhonda Kosciolak. She had a block party, we did approval of a block party for her several weeks ago. She said we can come, so I went, and they looked at me like I was crazy, driving, like, who is this? I said, remember, I was the one that helped vote to pass the, you know, block party. But anyway, they got, they was like, oh, yeah, so they invited me, so I had a great time, so I want to shout-out to Rhonda Kosciolak and her family, thank you for inviting me and making me feel warm and welcome to the block party. You know, you didn't remember who I was, but once I got, once they recognized me, it was a great time, and they fed me and all that good stuff, so thank you. And then a shout-out to the Cooley's. Steve and Rhonda Cooley, who has celebrated their aunt's 90th birthday, we did a resolution for the city council, a great event. This woman does not look like she's 90 years old, and it was awesome to be out there celebrating her. So thank you for the Cooley's, for putting on a magnificent event for their aunt, 90th, and then just some other quick things. We had music in the park, along with the Romulus Community Festival, the APA event, just so many good things going on in our city, and just the last thing I want to close on is that if you haven't been by Vining Row, please go by there and drive by Vining Row. It is beautiful. The Amazon Building is up, the roads look awesome, and all I can keep thinking, wow, we didn't have to pay for this. In addition to a courtyard, the court that we have going up, they're making significant progress, didn't have to pay a penny for it. So just much good stuff going on in our city. Please take note of the stuff going on, we moving forward progressively, and I'm just pleased to be a Romulus resident. And that ends my report.
Here, I'll make a motion to accept your report.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Webb, to accept the chairperson's report. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Number five is the mayor's report.
Good evening, city council treasurer, deputy clerk, and audience. This quote I picked was great, because it ties into St. John's Lodge Youth Day, it ties into Relay, it ties into senior Olympics, we're going to talk about a little bit, and I just loved it, so I'll pass it on to you. "Respect the old when you were young, and help the weak when you were strong." And I just thought, that's perfect. That's, that's Romulus strong, isn't it?
Yes.
So I thought that tied in everything we're talking about tonight, Madam Chairman. I do want to talk about the senior Olympics, we have some seniors here in the audience, they couldn't all be here. Thank you, seniors, for coming out on a rainy, stormy evening, but let's give them a round of applause. And we participated in the Downriver Senior Olympics, and we had 22 participating seniors this year, 38 medals, which is a record, so congratulations. I can tell you that this year, when it was down in Flat Rock, and we, we had some people that were newcomers to the senior Olympics and did a phenomenal job, and to the point where some of the communities thought Rose brought some ringers in. We said, no, these, these people are seniors that wanted to get involved, and they were just really impressive. So the reason we do this, and I brought them here tonight, Madam Chairman, is so that there might be somebody at home that is thinking, hey, I can do that, I can get involved, these are fun events, it goes on all week, from bowling, to swimming, to softball throw, to golf-related, to just all kinds of fun of events, and you've got the spirit of Romulus there, working together as a team. So what I'd like to do, if we could, just without taking a lot of time, have the electeds come down, have the seniors come up, just get a quick picture with Roger, so that we can help spread the word, and then we'll get back to our regular meeting.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, what is the age range for the senior Olympics?
I think it's 50, 50 and up.
50 and up?
They're trying to recruit me, but I don't, you know.
And we had a discussion with the mayor, and I told him that we're of age right now, where we can participate in the senior Olympic.
Thank you. So real quick, can we just get everybody down? Come on, Chris. Everybody set? One, two, three, and get 'em. All right, thank you. Thank you. Thanks, seniors. Thanks. Right. That bird. I need some more button. Thanks again, seniors, we sure appreciate all that you do. I did want to also comment on the issue with the, the public safety, and thank you for the comments, because that's important to the legislative body, where we try to get feedback back to you, so that you, because you're ambassadors of our community, as soon as possible, when things are happening fluid like that, and having the, the support is phenomenal. The SWAT from Conference Western Wayne jumping in, just a great collaborative effort, now state police leading that, and, and, you know, unfortunate, there was a dog involved, but at least the, the job was done, the residents were secure, and I just want to say, thank you to our police and fire services. I mean, you know, they're running into situations, but a lot of people are running out, and to be professional and to take care of us, and, and those are essential services for our community, so thanks for all that they do. I know we also have a quick video for some events coming up, so we'll roll that, and then we'll get into some action items under my report.
Thank you, and good evening. Here are some events coming up. The farmer's market is operating every Wednesday, and will run through September the 26th. It is located near the pavilion at the Historical Park downtown Romulus. It'll also be there on Saturday, August the 11th, from 11 until 4:00. Next sounds in downtown will be on Friday, August the 10th, with the band Mob Opera performing classic rock. Friday the 17th, the Soul and Funk Band Detour, and the last concert of the summer will be on the 24th, with local favorites Rust Belt Revival. Recreation Department is presenting summer youth and adult cardio classes. The youth classes are for kids ages seven to 18. Adult classes start at 8:00 PM. The library is hosting toddler storytime on Wednesdays at 10:30 AM. Saturday, August the 11th, will be the Fourth Annual Roman Chrome Poker Run, put on by the Romulus VFW and the Romulus Veterans Committee. All motorcycles, classic cars, and hot rods are welcome. Registration will be at Blue Sky, starting at 10:00 AM, with Roaring Out at 11:00. Parks and Recreation will present another movie in the park on Friday the 17th. The movie will be Coco, and will begin at dusk. The Greater Romulus Chamber of Commerce will hold their annual golf fundraiser at Links and Gateway, Thursday the 23rd, shotgun start at 9:30. Also on the 23rd, there'll be an unveiling of a monument honoring Medal of Honor recipient Charles Kawaska at his gravesite at Romulus Memorial Cemetery. Ceremony will begin at 6:00 PM. To find out more about all of our community events, go to the locations noted on your screen. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Roger. Lot going on, as you can hear and see. Couple of action items I have before you tonight. First is item A, and speaking of seniors, this is a recommendation from Rose Swedan, who does all the good work at the senior center, and this is our annual request, so the request is to concur with the administration and adopt the attached resolution in support of the Senior Alliance Annual Implementation Plan for Aging Services, and that will be for fiscal year 2019. So moved for the Senior Alliance Plan for 2018, 2019.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Webb, for the Senior Alliance Implementation Plan for 2018, 2019. Any discussion? Yes. Ms. Williams?
I would just like to say, I spoke with Rose pertaining to this line item, and she informed me that this is the monies that's needed to continue with the services to the seniors, so.
Correct.
The program.
Awesome. Thank you. We're going to start with the roll call vote. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo? Ms. Abdo.
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Next up is item B, and this is a request that came as a recommendation from the Arts Council Board, and I'm asking to concur with the administration, appoint David Paskowski to fill a vacant position for the Romulus Arts Council, a term to expire November 11th, 2019.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion to concur with the administration to appoint David Paskowski to the Romulus Arts Council.
Support.
It's been supported by Ms. Abdo, I mean, I'm playing motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Roscoe, to concur with the appointment of David Paskowski to fill the vacant position on the Romulus Arts Council, with a term to expire on November 11th, 2019. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Abdo.
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth. Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, Council. The last action item is a budget amendment, and what you have before you is a request to concur with the administration, and this is an introduction to Budget Amendment 18/19-2, and it's for some unexpected repairs to, for the debris tank in our vector machine that was 48,000.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion for the introduction of Budget Amendment 18/19-02 for the Motor Vehicle Fund.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Mr. Wasworth, for the, to concur with the administration, introduce Budget Amendment 18/19-02 for an unexpected major repair to replace the debris tank on the vector. Any discussion? I just have a question. What's a vector?
Vector's a machine that helps clean out some of the storm drains. You've probably seen the demo at DPW, it has a giant hose, it literally is like a vacuum cleaner, almost on wheels, semi-wheels, and it's used to pick up debris out of manholes, storm sewers, others.
It looks like a big elephant with a nose on it. Mr. Snuffleupagus, as the kids call it.
Probably can pick up peanuts, too.
As the kids call it.
I meant to Google it before I came, but I figured I'd just ask when I got here.
And to the chair, if I may.
Yes, Ms. Williams.
You know, we vote on items, but this was an emergency. But if we had to buy a brand new one, it would be astronomical.
Yes.
That's, sometimes we'll sit here, and we'll vote to purchase a piece of equipment, and I know that the audience or either the residents are thinking, "My God, $400,000, but you see what it takes even to repair one." So that's, I thank you, Kathy.
And to that point, there are a lot of communities that don't have a vector, and so then when they get into those situations, they're trying to loan them and borrow them or rent them.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Webb. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Abdo.
Yes.
Ms. Webb, did I get Ms. Webb?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, Council. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
6A1 is the clerk's report, and our city clerk, Ellen Craig Bragg, is out at the precincts this evening, setting up for tomorrow's voting. And she wanted me to remind everyone that the polls open at 7:00 in the morning, and they close at 8:00 PM. And also, that at all the schools, the voting will be taking place in the gymnasium. So that, at Barth Elementary and Hale Creek Elementary Schools, you must enter through the front doors, just a reminder, that the back doors will actually be barricaded off, so.
Thank you.
I'm just reminding everyone to come to the polls tomorrow if you haven't placed your absentee ballot, to be sure and vote tomorrow. And under the clerk's report is a study session request for Monday, August 27th, 2018, at 6:45 PM, to discuss Midwest recycling. And this is from the Assistant DPW Director, Kathy Ritter.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for a study session request for Monday, August 27th, at 6:45 PM, to discuss Midwest recycle. Oh my goodness. I'm sorry, for a study session, yeah, for the Midwest recycling. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Abdo.
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe.
Yes.
Ms. Was, Mr. Wasworth.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Other than a couple of items of information, that concludes the clerk's report. And 6B is the treasurer's report. Thank you. Good evening, Council, Mayor, Deputy Clerk, and Audience. I just have one thing that I wanted to talk about under my report, and that's Relay for Life. And I wanted to talk about that, because cancer does impact all of us. And it was a huge event, and a lot of work was put into it. And there are some people that I would like to name, because they went over and beyond, and I just think that they should be recognized. First and foremost, our team captain, Tracy Leininger, she did a phenomenal job. She worked really hard, and she just, outstanding work. She did, I can't even tell her how much work and what a great job she did. So I want to thank her. She's also our deputy treasurer and does a phenomenal job with that as well, so thank you, Tracy. Her co-captain was Jennifer Freyer, she did a great job as well, she's also a go-getter and did a phenomenal job. I'd like to thank Lynn Conway, her artistic abilities are amazing. She did a banner that took her 14 hours, and if you didn't see the pictures on Facebook, it is a must, because it was just outstanding. She also helped with the props, with cutting that out and setting that up, and we all chipped in and painted that, and that turned out fantastic. I also would like to thank Frank and Robin McCurdy and Councilwoman Eva Webb. They brought out the tables we needed, they also brought out a huge tent and a generator, those are a must, and so thank you very much for that. Frank is a great guy. I'm telling you, they don't get any better than Frank, so thank you so much.
My son-in-law.
And then I would like to thank Jordan and April Coltrane, they brought out a beautiful camper, and as you know, it was very warm outside. So that was great, that we had that to go in and cool down in. And then Terry and Gloria Hoeschlag, which is Jennifer and Tracy's mother and father, they are always willing to pitch in and help out and go over and beyond, and I want to thank them. They did a wonderful job as well. And Tracy Eddings, I mean, where isn't Tracy Eddings? Tracy did so many things, I can't even name everything that she did, but she was a huge help, and we really want to thank her. I want to thank the entire Romulus team, because without everybody, it would not have been as successful as it was. Everybody pitched in, somehow, some way, it doesn't matter what it was, you did a fantastic job, and it wouldn't have been as successful as it was without each and every one of you, so thank you. And then, I also want to just let everybody know that there was a goal set for Team Romulus for 10,000, that was the initial goal. And when we left on Sunday, they were just about 14,500, money still coming in. So they did an outstanding job. So I just want to thank each and every one of you that participated, that helped, that donated, that did whatever you did. Thank you so much. Of course, our police, our fire, our DPW, they all chipped in and helped out, so thank you guys very, very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And that is it for my report.
Thank you.
If I could add on to that as well, Madam Chairman, I think that amount for Team Romulus, that was the highest amount raised by any team, so it was very well-nosed by, not just that weekend, but all the events going up to it, all the other fundraisers and pledges and gene days and bake sales, and, I mean, on and on and on, and they've still got a little time to go yet, so just phenomenal, great effort, and can't thank everybody enough that came out, so thank you.
Thank you. Number seven is public comment. This is the part of the program where individuals who would like to address City Council must raise their hand, and when recognized by the chair, approach the podium and state their name and address. Remarks shall be limited to three minutes, subject to being extended an additional three minutes by consent of the chairperson. There shall be no personal attacks, and remarks shall not contain any profanity, racial, ethnic, sexual, or national origin slurs or overtones. This public meeting shall not be used to campaign for elected office, and may not be used to support or oppose any candidate or ballot proposals. Anyone not adhering to these rules shall lose their right to address City Council. A response to any questions and/or concerns will be provided under Agenda Item Number Eight, Unfinished Business, only if the information is available. Otherwise, responses that require further investigation will be given at a later date. And we do not have any written requests this evening.
Thank you, Barb. Do we have any comments from the audience?
Hello. I'm glad you said that, because I feel so close to you, I never say my name, I just think everybody knows me. Amen. I know you noticed it, but anyway, I just wanted to comment on the Relay for Life, and all the other events that I attended. I mean, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for that love and unity, and yes, we might have some things going, we all do. But what we're trying to do is look at how we come together, and we do come together. And you really meet a lot of people. I meet a lot of the children that, you know, I had in the lunchroom, because that's where I've been, almost over 30 years or so, but it was so beautiful, which, oh, and I forgot, I'm going to tell them about, we were hungry, because we hadn't eaten. And who was that group that brought the hot dogs to us?
Oh, Team Romulus.
Yeah. Okay, Team Romulus, thank you. They were good, too. I didn't stop at the hot dogs either. I said, "You got a drink or something?" He said, "Oh, sure, sure, sure." But it was just wonderful. Even as I'm in here tonight, it's the presence, it's the presence of that unity and love that was demonstrated. And I don't care what goes on, this is a good community, I love it. I've been here for years, my husband, I'm really excited, my grandson, and we're here. We're Romulus residents. And I just want to say, and y'all look good up there for some reason tonight, too. Boy, you look relaxed, you look, you know, like, you're just happy or something. But you do, and that picture you took with the seniors, oh, that was so wonderful, they might get me out there, I don't know, don't y'all take me on that. But anyway, y'all look beautiful, and I'm going to encourage you, and y'all keep on keeping on, amen. Because everybody plays a part in everything. We need each other. Every one of us can do something the other one can't do, but if we come together and help that one, and, because I know something he don't know. I know something you don't know, Jazz, okay? But if we bring it together, we got the whole pie, and it'll work. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Tally.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I didn't address you there.
Thank you, Mom.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Reverend Tally.
You look so professional.
Thank you, Reverend Tally. We'll talk later. Any other comments from the audience? Hearing none, we're going to close that portion out, Barb.
Number eight is unfinished business.
Mrs. Tally, if I could, I probably should have done this under the clerk's report, but Mayor, I got calls this week, and I guess we weren't the only one, that they were going to be, they were going to be transferring a liquor license on Eureka Road. And part of the liquor license was going to allow a topless permit. Well, we got documentation tonight, all of us did, for the public to call me, that it's not zoned properly, and it's not going to happen. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yeah, that is correct. There, we received a communication from the state, which we should, through the clerk's office to council. We immediately saw that sent it to planning and building, notified the petitioner, they were trying to transfer a name over, not realizing that they weren't, you know, that's not a permitted use there. We did send a memo that you were copied on today to the liquor license, notifying them, so they'll modify that, so it'll be a transfer, but they'll have, you know, nothing to do with topless dancing whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Williams.
So Mayor, what you're saying, did the information go to the state or to the owner of the establishment?
Both. Yeah, we had, two different people had conversation with the petitioner of the transfer of the license. A communication, a written correspondence that council got today was sent to the state as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Number nine is new business. Number 10, communication.
Real quick on the communications, I just want to apologize for the errors. It's hard getting used to being up here, chairing a meeting, so excuse my errors, but I do want to give a quick shout out to our mayor pro tem, Mr. Barton. I should have did it under the chairperson's report. He's out with his beautiful wife and family, enjoying a family time, as our mayor always say, "Family first," and he deserves it, and him and his wife and his family, so I just want to give a shout out to him. Big shoes for me to follow, so just please forgive my errors.[1772.88]